John.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
Sarah.
Sarah, roll call.
Travis.
Here.
May.
Here. Sarah, roll call. Are you here? Sarah, are you here? She's here.
Yeah.
I need the motion to go in public hearing for a 2080 agreement between Lincoln, Auburn, and Police Department. The motion got a second.
Is that here?
The motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
And it goes in public hearing at seven oh one. Who would like to go first? Vic?
I can we hear the description of what what the 2080 agreement is for July?
Yeah. You could you go with that with the 2080?
Would you rather or maybe?
I don't care. Joe, we have a working and we had this meeting on this with council two weeks ago. About two weeks ago, the 2080. Essentially, what it is, it's obviously a 2080 agreement between the city of Mount Vernon, the city of Lisbon, to develop the Mount Vernon-Lisbon Police Department. And essentially, what happens is the city will pay, I think the initial amount is
Three hundred and forty thousand?
Okay. Two hundred and forty thousand annually. For that, there's an advisory board that's being created between both Mount Vernon and Lisbon. And those folks will have meetings, produce annual reports, review finances and operations, make recommendations, so on and so forth. The budget, I'm giving you a thumbnail sketch here, you can have a copy if you'd like. The budget cannot increase Lisbon even for the five percent annually without city approval. So for this upcoming fiscal year, usually January one to June three, which is a normal fiscal year, if this goes into play, for example, January first, that three hundred and forty thousand will be prorated for those six months. The city of High Rock, excuse me, Lisbon keeps all its equipment, they can go sell it, take the money, keep it. All the equipment that's going to be used under the agreement will be owned by the city of Mount Vernon. It's a five-year agreement. However, it can be terminated by Mount Vernon or Lisbon, or by the advisory board on a majority vote. After a period of one year, you've got to give an eighteen-month notice so that both departments can have time to split and reacquire the equipment in Lisbon's case.
The officers would be in hand in Mount Vernon?
Yes, they'd be employees of Mount Vernon. Any prosecution services, so for example, if they write a traffic ticket in Mount Vernon, it'll be prosecuted by the Mount Vernon city attorney. Any traffic tickets issued in Lisbon will be prosecuted by the Lisbon city attorney. Let's see what else.
What our annual police budget in Lisbon prior to this?
It's about a fifty thousand dollar difference in our favor. It saves the city about fifty thousand dollars. This year.
Oh, I did mention one thing, probably pretty important since Doug's sitting here, the department will be managed by the Auburn police chief. And Doug is here, he can probably answer questions too, if folks have them specifically as may be as far as coverage in Lisbon, that's probably an important issue. How you would do the supporting staff and, you know, things going to the city.
What I would do, obviously Lisbon has three full-time officers right now, Mount Vernon is equipped with six full-time officers, and we have reserves and part-time that we supplement with routinely. Currently, when Lisbon does not have an officer on duty, which right now they're currently allocated, I mean, they're down to one at the time for patrol purposes, Mount Vernon is covering with an existing 2080 agreement as well. So we're covering calls, handling situations when there's not a Lisbon officer on duty. This new agreement would put twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five coverage for Lisbon and Mount Vernon. So you would have, there's always an officer on duty. In most cases, probably ninety to ninety-five percent of the time, as long as we're full-staffed, not, somebody's not out with illness or injury or something like that, you would have two officers out most of the time, sometimes three, as it goes. With the exceptions of, you know, depending on what schedule we go with, there would probably be about twenty hours during that timeframe during a week where there might only be one officer on during low-key, low-volume times. Stuff like that, so.
The fifty thousand dollar savings that we have for, like you were mentioning, does that include us having a police chief or a lot of police teams?
That includes us having one. It's fifty thousand dollar difference from the budget last year.
I have the utmost respect for Mount Vernon and their police force. I just personally feel, and I guess I'm somewhat disappointed by the lack of turnout because I've talked to people and they feel the same. Lisbon's going to be going backwards. We've tried for years to be not a little brother of Mount Vernon. And quite honestly, if you talk to a lot of people, there's a lot of people that feel Lisbon's a suburb of Mount Vernon. And we're going backwards and we're going to promote that to our citizens. What's next? I mean, fire department gonna be the Mount Vernon Fire Department? The schools are gonna start sharing superintendent? I mean, where does it stop? I understand we're fifty thousand dollars, but this all started from, what, four months ago, five months ago, by losing Rick Scott? Now we have Amy, I have nothing but great things to say about Amy. But we have a cop in town, and he can talk to, I don't, he polled ten people, I mean, I guess seven of them would say Jeff is one of the most unfriendly people in town. And when we had Rick, this was someone that promoted Lisbon and helped Lisbon. Jeff, you weigh back, he can break your arm, weigh down, he won't, he won't even look at me. And I feel we're gonna be getting that more so, and nothing against this, I know there's Lisbon people that work for Mount Vernon Police, and I have respect for you guys, and don't hold me over after this. But I'm just saying in general, we're going backwards. We're trying to promote Lisbon as growing, prospering, moving forward. We're going backwards. And if I'm the only one that agrees on the town, so be it, but I know for a fact that I'm not. But by the turnout, I feel that I am, and it's frustrating. But you guys are gonna do what you want. We have, we have really no say. I'm here to voice my opinion. You guys can vote all you want. What sucks is when whoever's up next, next year, doesn't run or gets voted out, the next people on council are stuck with this for at least a year. So that's my two cents. When I was on council, I helped push the get solar on. We stayed money looking solar on. How much money? I don't know. I'm pretty sure quite a bit more than what fifty thousand dollars is for a year. So fifty thousand dollars of a grant scheme things isn't a whole lot. I personally feel the money that we're spending, having all these little credit sessions you guys are having, that are all, there's so many closed-door meetings that we can't be a part of. Tell you what's going on, we have let you guys, our, our voice, we are letting, you are letting our voice heard. You're having all closed-door meetings. How many of, how many closed-door sessions have you had in the past two months? Quite a few.
I think we've had three, but they've all been at the request of an employee, and the council itself hasn't had any closed sessions.
Um, I, let's just, I'll, I'll beg you ever, there's certain things that
We didn't generally want, but it's public record.
Okay, there's public record that I asked for today, that I want, that says I'll get it. There's a lot of things that I want to tell that has, and after I got more or less told to get out of last meeting I was at, there are a lot of people upset with you guys up here. Every one of you. I have respect for most of you guys. But what you're doing to the town by moving backwards, again, Mount Vernon, I respect you. But we're gonna go backwards.
One thing I would like to add into that before we continue from there. When you talk about moving backwards and you talk about a fifty thousand dollar savings, when you're looking at that, you're not necessarily comparing apples to apples. What you're going to get is true twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five coverage for fifty thousand dollars less than you're currently paying for three officers to cover your town. So you're going to get an officer on duty all the time. So I would challenge the moving backwards portion of that, just in that aspect, that you are actually
We need to put our money that we have allocated in other parts of the city towards the police department and make our police department grow.
To make, to make your department a full-time police department, I'm not arguing one way or the other, this is completely your decision from that standpoint, I've always presented it that way. I will tell you, it'll take six full-time officers, which is what I currently have, my budget is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make that happen. So if you, if you want to compare apples to apples with true twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five coverage, you're talking about a substantial increase.
What was our twenty-eighteen agreement back when we did have three, four officers? And we had, and we gave you guys hours over the weekend or off nights?
Your contracting times, which is roughly approximately forty thousand dollars a year for that. But that still is not twenty, you don't have an officer in town on duty twenty-four-seven.
And I understand that. But twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, I agree that that would be great. But I also feel that, and I'm not trying to say that Lisbon shouldn't need it, but for Lisbon, I, I personally don't feel we need twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. But that should need it. People can call nine-one-one pretty quick if they see something going on.
Have a good day coming. That's right. I'm gonna sit at the city limits line and they're gonna wait for a deputy. I just want the Mount Vernon on an alarm, the deputy was coming from right there. We cannot sit and wait for people to get on scene for their officers to arrive. If I have something going on at my house and I'm off duty and I call nine-one-one, I can't wait twenty minutes. And that's, that's the issue. If, if, to me, you either join with Mount Vernon or you get full-time officers to get twenty-four-seven coverage, that's the only way this is gonna work to protect the system. And if you, if you go out and look, there are so many cities looking for police officers you can't hire. Look at the news media, nobody wants to get caught. And if you get a cop here, chances are it's gonna be somebody else's problem or somebody that's just trying to get in here and then leave to go somewhere else. I totally, there's no more, somebody more Lisbon than me. And I totally get the meaning, Joe, but you, you have to look out for what's best for this is in twenty-four-seven coverage. You get your name on the side of this blood bar, it's less money. You have a voice and twenty-four-seven coverage, that's four home runs. I don't know, I don't even know what yard it would be. But I respect what I have to say.
Well, why, but it worked for how many years? I mean, how many years has this worked? And we're, we're going to change because we have, we have a police chief.
I can tell you, you've been working on this for years now.
Well, we're right, this is money that we're working on.
Eighties and nineties and two thousands, two thousand.
Hey, we paid you how much money a year because you put time with the police department.
We should have done this twenty years ago.
All right, all right. Couple things.
Stephanie? No, Doug, no, Stephanie, go for it.
No, I'm open.
No.
I'm a mayor, I'm gonna go first.
You're a Doug, how many times have you quit as being mayor?
Joe.
You've been Doug for how long? You can't call yourself a mayor right now.
Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
Are you kidding me right now, Joe?
Go for it, then.
You were on council in two thousand sixteen when we discussed this.
And exactly, did we do anything about it? No.
Because we couldn't do it legit, just, just legitimately to do it. You did not object in two thousand sixteen, but you do now because Rick is not a police chief.
No, that is not the case.
As for, as for closed-door meetings, we've never had a closed-door meeting where we got paid for it. So don't say we have, we're high destructive. We've never hit anything through the public. Whenever they want something, we've always told them the truth. So don't say, man, you've been sitting in these chairs before too.
Exactly. Did I, did I say that I'm a police department of, with Mount Vernon Police? No, you find any records, please, any records.
Then you were in favor of it?
Yeah.
We did it in two thousand sixteen, the whole council was in favor, and so was the police chief at the time.
We, did we vote on it? Did we do anything?
No, because we were in a meeting for it, and it didn't work out, so then we dropped him. That's the truth.
I'd like to bring up one point. If there's an emergency, who's the first one on the scene?
General police.
Police is the first one usually, followed by the fire department, right? See ambulance, being a volunteer ambulance, the person that really needs to be there to take them to the hospital is the third person. Right now, the officer we have, full-time officer on duty, does not live right in the area. You don't want to wait for ten, twenty, half an hour for somebody to show up. Granted, the fire department would show up. But minutes count people's lives when somebody's having a heart attack or their heart stops. I don't know what you think that's worth.
It's worth a lot, like you were saying, it would for how many years this way?
I don't know how many people over those years might have made it if they would have had immediate response to their call to nine-one-one. I don't know, I wouldn't be surprised, but we have some people that were wishing that we had full-time twenty years ago. To say we're moving backwards when we're saving money and getting twenty-four-seven coverage, this isn't the start of us combining towns. It makes sense because it saves money and gives us better service. How can, well, you can say it's moving backwards, but I don't think anybody else thinks that way. Except I've seen some people that are scared we'll lose our identity. Well, if you want to move backwards and let's not have a combined ambulance service, we would, I don't think either town can afford an ambulance service by themselves. In the same way with the community development group, we've done it a lot by being part of that. So I say combine where it makes sense. I'd like to see our schools be able to stay separate. We don't know what the state's going to do to us in the future on that. But I, I just don't want to find your hard enough rather how, that's all I've got.
You want Stephanie to do that?
Well, she was gonna back straight, so we can deal with all of it.
Actually, what I was going to say was, Joe, you have been chastising us for months up here and telling us that we're not doing our job correctly. You sat here in a meeting and wanted to know where the policies were on the dog, you wanted to know everything. You were on the council when that dog was hired. So when you're sitting here accusing us of everything, you should think about what you're doing when you're on the council. So I'll say that.
That's fine.
Secondly, I'll say that there is a very real possibility that if we don't join with Mount Vernon this time around, because it has been brought up so many times, and they put so much effort into it, that we won't ever be able to join with them, and they may not want to do a 2080 agreement with us anymore. So we may use the coverage that we have from them now, currently. So you've got to think about that because that's gonna require us to get another officer. Second of all, your attack can threaten you because you don't like me, and that uncalled for.
No, that's not.
Yes, it is. You knew how many hours he put in every week and what he does every day, you would, you would shut your mouth. You don't know, and you're the only person in town apparently who does it because everybody sitting here can tell you that they've had multiple people tell you that they've seen him working all the time. If you want to come after me, come after me, but leave him out of it. Yes.
No.
Anybody else got anything to say?
So I've been against this for quite a long time, okay? I sat in two of the sessions that we had joint meetings with Lisbon and Mount Vernon about this very topic under two different areas, and now three. And I, the, the issue that always came up was, was money. You know, I'm the same way. I feel like we're gonna lose our identity, right? Because what, you're right, where does it stop? What's next? You know, are we gonna join public works departments? Are we gonna do this? Are we gonna do that? But I've also listened to a lot of other people as well and say, it's good for us. We do have quite a few of the officers that work for Mount Vernon, live in Lisbon. So if you have the ability to call somebody that's on the Lisbon, Mount Vernon Police Department, and they're at home, they can come over and help you out, right? It's the same thing that Ricky used to do. Or Jeff, or Amy, whomever was. In fact, I remember a time that I called Ricky to come help me, and it was the Mount Vernon Police Department came over to help me. Most of the time, when you have a call in Lisbon, who shows up? Mount Vernon. Even when Ricky was on, you know, the police chief, and we had people on duty. It's that way, and I don't think being progressive means that we're going backwards. I mean, we are looking at twenty-four-seven, we have never been able to do that, right? And right now, yeah, you're right, right, right now, we probably don't need twenty-four-seven. But we have a bypass that's just that, the amount of people that are gonna come to this town will increase. Okay, it is increasing right now because we're in the middle of a pandemic and nobody wants to move or build or do anything right now, nor can they. But in a year, two years, our population will, you know, boom, you know, no lock edition will be full. And we'll be doing housing developments, out by the bypass. So the need to have someone here twenty-four-seven is gonna increase. And we just don't have the money, nor, we don't even think we can sustain six officers with what we have right now. Right? So they're right, we do have an opportunity, and it's a good opportunity. They had to convince me, just like everybody else. You know, I've had people that have talked to me that said, we need to do this. But I have also had people that said, we shouldn't do this, right? I've been here for a long time, and I've been a Lisbon guy my whole life. Never wanted to do anything with Mount Vernon. You know, I have to rethink my, my thoughts as well. And I have to look at my family and protect my family, you know? Every time my dad gets sick, the first people that show up usually is the Mount Vernon Police Department or our fire department. And on several occasions, we never even had a Lisbon officer show up. So that's a little disheartening, you know? Can we continue to go, what are we gonna wait for? Are we gonna wait for something bad to happen in Lisbon before we realize that maybe perhaps we should have done this? You know? So that's, you know, that's my case. I've been through this, and I was the lone holdout amongst the council. You ask me.
Well, that's not entirely true for us, because even as I sit here tonight, I don't know the right answer, but I was really hoping that you would have a room full of people
And have a good vibe.
And you would get a good deal for what people want, because I've too had people say I'm all for it. And I've also had people say, not that they're all against it, but that they're worried about like what happens three years from now if it doesn't work out or something like that. You know, also while I was thinking, you mentioned about what's next when we join schools, you do realize that our superintendent is shared with Springville right now.
Yeah, I understand that.
So I mean, is it just it's Mount Vernon? I, I don't know.
No, it, it's not that, it, it's not that, I was going, I'm one hundred and ten percent for Lisbon. It's just frustrating when I know that we can do something, but we fall back on Mount Vernon, then it's out. It, it's
And I look at that like, thank God they are there to help us out, because
That's great, I, I agree, but it also, we, we should try to talk. If Mount Vernon wasn't there, we had figured it out ourselves. Why can't we try to figure it out ourselves?
If Mount Vernon wasn't there, we probably have to be in an agreement with Lynn County, and it would take twenty minutes for somebody to get here. And I think, and Brandon, I think you touched on it, but remind me, or Doug, anybody, Lynn County cannot come into town until one of our own is there?
No, Lynn County can cover, I mean, they cover anywhere in the county from that standpoint. What Brandon was talking about before was when they've kind of gone back and forth. Mount Vernon technically has no legal responsibility to respond to calls for service in Lisbon. We're, we're the police service for the city of Mount Vernon, and that's where our requirements are, before we had the 2080 that we currently have in place. That 2080 is what allows us to come over and answer calls in Lisbon when there's not a Lisbon car on duty. I personally have worked when our department refused to come over until there was another car here, because what's going on, before we had the 2080 in place, our officers would respond to a volatile call, a violent domestic situation. They would be in a higher-risk situation, and they're out in the wind for liability reasons because they're, they are outside of their jurisdiction, they're operating under mutual aid, but there was no mutual aid agreement between the city of Mount Vernon and the city of Lisbon at the time. So until we got the recent 2080 in place, where they, we contract coverage when we're not in, our officers were basically sticking their neck out because it was the right thing to do. Because rather than listening to a violent domestic go on when they could intervene and do something, instead of waiting for the car from payload, and I've sat at the city limits of Mount Vernon on Highway thirty for ten to fifteen minutes on calls before, waiting for a deputy to go by so that I could follow the deputy to the call and back him up on the call. And I will tell you morally, ethically, that is the wrong decision. When you know that there is a life and death situation occurring in Lisbon because there's not a contract in place or not even agreement in place, you are jeopardizing your people.
And I just have one more thing to say, Chris, and I'm gonna mess up his talking. Notch is on Zoom, and he would like to say something too, so just give me a second, Chris, and then I was gonna say, you know, you talk about Lisbon. Two of the officers from Mount Vernon, one of them is Jason Linkson, the other one is Stephen Mole.
I know.
Real time Lisbon family.
Exactly.
He was awesome.
I bullshit with that.
I mean, how could anybody think that they would love Lisbon just as much as we do?
I, Stephanie, you're, you're, you're dragging us a little bit too far. I have nothing against officers that work for Mount Vernon, I have nothing against them. I just want Lisbon to have their own. I, I've never, Lisbon, Mount Vernon, Angeles, that's, I mean, that was there ever since I've been this high. I don't, I just don't like us having to ask for help. And that's kind of what we're doing, is asking for help.
But you're doing that before too.
You know, one thing, Joe, one, one different now than a few years back, and if you ask Doug, I think Mount Vernon needs Lisbon a little more now than it did before. They, they go down an officer, they, they're out there, they're short one now, they get somebody on vacation or somebody sick. We, we cover a lot of the same calls, we end up at the same place. And I think now more than ever, both communities need each other. And I can just peace of mind as a resident and as an officer in Lisbon, that we, we have each other to back. Tonight, if somebody else stopped a car with bypass at Mount Vernon, I'll go check on them because there will not be a deputy anywhere around here. And that's, that's the part that I wish everybody could see. And I, the city grants, I, I want people to come out and go, Brandon, I don't want to do it. Because you'll understand a lot more knowing how the nuances, basically, we're operating in one park, but now officers are doing it. That's, that's the truth.
I completely agree with you on that.
And also, you're still gonna have an office here.
Chris, upstairs, absolutely. Chris?
Chris?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah.
Wait, hang, hang on a second, I'm gonna give the mic, the mic's off. Whatever they have here. Go ahead, Chris.
Here now.
Is that better?
So just, I apologize, I'm quarantined right now, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, uh, and I can't see who spoke last, but you kind of hit the nail on the head. We're better together. Not necessarily, never. I don't know that we, in Mount Vernon, we're advocating, you know, a combination of schools, but looking close to the police department, I think this makes sense. Keep in mind that we're helping Lisbon, and Lisbon is helping us, this is, to me, a, a, a true working relationship. We're going to be able to hire and keep better officers. We're going to be able to compete with Highatha and Senior Rapids and Mary to retain good people. It is very challenging right now to be a police officer, it's even more challenging to get the, get the skills to enter that profession. You know, it's an imaginary line that, that sits between us, and we, you know, we are gonna be working together quite a bit, but again, I still think that we, I think we are better together regardless. I don't know if we're speaking about bypass development, you know, helping out on public works where we can, but where we can, but we have the building now, we have the space. We have an opportunity here. Uh, if you look at it from Lisbon's perspective, you know, the space, the problems numbers, you could go the next 10 to 15 years, even at a 5% increase and not reach what you're spending today. Um, I think that's huge for us. Uh, again, it's stability, being able to offer the officers, uh, the ability and their shifts. They have the two officers on for duty at each time, you know? We've had a number of close calls. We sit off Highway 30. We have not good people stopping your communities all over. I think they're divided or wants to cooperate and that most people don't read the community's support to figure out just how crazy they can get between the two of us, but, um, I do think this is a good thing for both communities and this is not by any means a takeover. This just makes sense.
Do you have a second?
Not much. I mean, I got, you know, like you say, I'm used to being out on Richmore and he come over and help me out, whether what, same way with any officers, we still would. But what you're getting out of this is not being able to, not having to do that anymore. You're always going to have somebody around to help you, not have to call somebody's personal cell phone to help you out. Um, which I think is great. I mean, obviously, I've lived here almost my whole life and moved away, came back, uh, and now I'm going to raise my family here, you know? And that's, and I, I don't want to have an emergency in town where we have to wait, you know? Especially being on Mount Vernon this person and then having to wait, you know? You have to bid if something goes wrong for a deputy to come and help you out. Um, uh, and then the last thing is just that, you know, this is a five-year contract ultimately, right? So we get a chance to reevaluate this and, and if we do, you know, the town goes first eventually and we do, you know, have a week for our own police force in five years, then I guess we try to reevaluate and relearn ourselves back to have our own police force. I think right now, it seems to me not to be a problem.
So I believe Joe out there is the lone wolf who's the only person that's against this. We did receive two emails and a letter, uh, from other people in the community, um, voicing an opinion against joining the departments. Um, I like, um, an idea that, that one of them have with, you know, perhaps doing some kind of a... Uh, they had asked for a referendum, um, but what I look at is maybe, you know, can we or should we look at doing a, you know, an email? You know, people that weren't able to come tonight, that you have a strong opinion either for or against. You all have our email addresses, you know, emails and let us know, you know? That way we know how the majority of the community feels, you know? It's kind of hard for, for one guy to sit out there all by himself and, and get blasted by everybody, but, you know, he's not the only one and we know that. So I think we might want to look at, you know, something like that, maybe, you know, encouraging the community to, to write the, the council members and let them know how they feel, either for or against. Um, we have, you know, we'll have to go through the typical three reads and so there's, you know, always time to change people's minds in that amount of time. So, um, this isn't the only opportunity that anybody has to speak about it.
Danny, did you have anything to add?
I think a lot of the citizens' life rewinding six months ago. I think a lot of them are just mad about the regular thing because they're very life-threatening. But different situations, cities, I didn't, obviously, there's no reason. I mean, Doug, I didn't get a great idea. I'm not against it. My only question was is, is there another option? But obviously Sheriff's Department is too old to wait, it sounds like. That'd be the only question I would have. Like, say like Central City and all that, contract the Sheriff's Department, but I don't want to wait for my, all that, it sounds like it is a very good scenario. This is probably the best option, in my opinion, but... I think that's the main frustration you probably didn't hear from most people. They want to go back the way it was, but that ain't possible at this point in time. So this is the second best option, I think.
And I'm sorry, I don't know.
Do you think if those, you know, if they're out?
Okay.
You can invest within whatever, we can sell off vehicles, whatever, and the money goes back to Lisbon. Say in five years, we decide that we don't want to do this. If I always use equipment, I have to do vehicles back. I mean, there's no way that Lisbon's physically going to be able to do that. I mean, the fire department's been asking for a new truck for past years. We haven't been able to do that. So how are we going to get, what, three new vehicles to be part of?
Well, that's one of the reasons why they added eight too much. I mean, that's give them a year's notice and then...
Yeah, we, we can't get that kind of money in a year. I mean, Brandon, I mean, I mean, I understand Brandon and Joey gave us, and Joey fired you and asked for
New fire truck.
One fire truck, I'm guessing probably what, three, four police vehicles? Depending on how, how checked out the police vehicles are.
Not more than that. You know, fire trucks are $300,000.
Well, I'm okay, but I was saying, if you're going to be buying three, four vehicles plus new equipment plus everything else, it's not physically possible.
If Lisbon decided to step away from this and we go back to their own police department, this agreement can continue until such time as you're physically able to do that. I mean, it's, this is an ongoing agreement. It's not like you have to make a decision in three years from now. You know, you can control some of that and so it's, it's all, and that's why, that's why, you know, I wanted a longer commitment.
I guess
That's why we went with the eighteen month.
If, if we go back to our four officers in Lisbon that we had and still contract them
We didn't have to.
Three then, whatever it was. And we still contract with you guys for 2080 agreement for the all kinds of things aren't able to
If that's possible, right.
And we don't know if that's possible.
What do you mean, you don't know if that's possible?
Because we don't know if the Mount Vernon City Council is going to allow that.
They've been, you guys have been doing it for how many years?
Correct.
Then why would you change it?
They're getting stressed, Joe.
They, they need more officers, just like we need more officers. And so in their mind, they would rather not have their officers come over to Lisbon. If we are in an agreement together, it would be better for their officers to be controlling their town. And that's a, you know, that's a possibility.
This is a, this is the true best situation for both communities. In my, in my, my professional opinion, there, we're providing 24/7 coverage. And I don't, I don't think Lisbon, I don't know if you don't understand that concept of what that means. 24/7, 365, there is an officer on duty. Not on call, not off duty at home, by a phone. They are on duty, in a squad car, ready to respond. And you may need, you may not need that and there's a lot of days you'll, you'll talk to the officers. 80% boredom, 20% insane as it goes through. And so, but when is that time? You need that officer at your facility or your, your address right now.
And I, you can probably speak to this better than I can, but I also think there's some frustration with Mount Vernon because we truly have been talking about this for 20 years. And we've gotten really close a couple of different times and then Lisbon's pulled back. And so I think they're getting to the point where they're kind of done. You know, and Doug has spent a lot of time, that's Mount Vernon's money paying Doug to put all this paperwork together and work through this. They've paid an attorney to go back and forth on their contract. I mean, they don't want to invest again to have it just fall apart again.
I've been involved in this in 2012, 2016, and now 2020, again. And that's true.
I've been on, yeah.
Have we, I'm sure you have, but I, have we explored Lisbon getting more police officers?
For, for us, we'd give 24/7. We would have to have six officers.
And I'm not, I'm not looking for that. I was saying for us, exactly where we have three, three officers.
That is true, but us as a council, that's what we're looking at because we don't want to be one to say, you know, my God, without, and no one will surround. I mean, we want, we want to be, give that protection to every citizen in, in Lisbon. We want that protection for every citizen.
Where are the officers who we have our hand on duty at one time?
Again, between the two communities, probably a large percentage of the time, there will be at least two officers on. There will be certain times there are probably three officers on, weekdays, different things like that. And it all depends on training, vacation and everything else. And there's probably approximately, just on an example schedule that I put out, um, to council, like Saturday and Sunday during the daytime, there may only be one officer on. But every night, there's two officers on. So it increases officer safety, it increases public safety. Both of those are critical components in today's day and age in law enforcement.
The other thing is, is you can't have it both ways. It can't be a growing town that's changing and prospering and we've got all this new spending stuff happening, but we need to hold back on our police department, we need to hold back on our coverage and we need to... We can't have it both ways. We are growing. We're going to have sports contests out there, there's going to be tournaments out there, there's going to be traffic coming in and out. You know, like Travis mentioned, there's essentially going to be growth out there because of the bypass. We're going to have more people and more people means more coverage.
Anyway, you asked about more officers. So let's say we go with six. Right now, it's $390,000. So you're looking basically double your budget with six officers. Because you got three, we got a budget we ran out for two officers. So that'd be $700,000, maybe $100,000.
But they also talked about 10% increase in property taxes to pay for. Uh, let's move forward. I remember over 20 years ago, some of the councils and mayors were telling their officers, "Don't go to Lisbon even to have lunch with them, to exchange information. We want you in our town all the time." That was backward thinking. Let's continue to move forward. You're the only one I heard that said this is moving backwards to join forces. I see other people are concerned about the future and...
Now, I guess I'll be the vulnerable and that advice, but...
You're my...
I don't think you're that vulnerable. You're the only one that came tonight, but I've had other people tell me that they're concerned about it.
I, I just wish that we would pursue, this just mean that we would preserve moving forward of boosting our police presence. Granted, I know we're, we're growing. We, we're going to need more. But to move forward and get Lisbon back up to three, possibly four, and then contracting more from Mount Vernon for the off, I think we can't.
But we're not necessarily going to be able to contract.
That, that requires us to have the ability to contract. We're in the same boat you are. We are having trouble finding officers to provide services to our community, let alone your community as well.
What, what is happening, Joe, is I'm, I'm going to use one of your officers as a really good example. They had a great officer who actually lived in Lisbon and was an officer for Mount Vernon. He left to go to Hiawatha because Hiawatha will pay your health benefits until you're 65 after you retire. We can't offer that. They can't offer that. We can't offer somebody a $10,000 sign-on bonus. We can't compete with all of these big cities who can offer all of that. And when we did the research and we looked into it, it would take us a year and a half at least to get an officer hired from start to finish because they're not out there.
We're in the hiring, we're in the hiring process right now at 13 applicants. Two of those are former certified. As, and like I said, basically our interview pool is down to non-certifieds, brand-new people that you're going to have to train up.
And to certify them takes a year and a half-ish?
It'll take, the academy's 16 weeks and you got approximately six months of FTO training after that.
We've had more than one case where an officer wasn't certified. His year was up, we got an extension, still couldn't pass and just doesn't always work out.
Is there a plan for the old police department or are you guys buying?
Is there what? I'm sorry.
The old police department, are you guys buying or what? What's the plan for that?
We would need, if we're bringing in two more officers, we would need some of that equipment to transition over that as well. Absolutely.
And in our last discussion, how that looked was like, let's say that Mount Vernon decides that they want one of them or two of them or whatever, um, that would come off of like our first year's payment to them or whatever, the amount that they would pay us for it.
So we don't pay them? We, we don't pay a payment for the less part of your price? I agree.
Yes.
After the charge.
After the year. Once, once it's done, it's just a contract. Here's the dollar figure, all-inclusive.
Joe, there's nothing saying that you're worried about five years from now, you know, the city of Lisbon comes out of this agreement and, um, you know, doesn't have any equipment or anything like that. We put $10,000 a year in a fund for that very reason. There's nothing saying we can't still do that. We can still put that money in that fund and if the time ever comes that the city needs it, it's sitting there. If the time doesn't come, the money's there. I mean, it can be used for something else down the road. There's nothing saying we can't still put that money away.
We know the thing, that if it's split, Mount Vernon's not going to need all that equipment again. So now you're basically buying back.
Well, we might not want, you know, five years from now, we might be buying it already.
No, what I'm saying is, they're going to have five cars, probably, something about, they're probably not going to need five cars. So the thought would be, instead of buying brand-new, you'd have the option to buy the equipment. If they don't need company at a reduced cost, then you would be a dis-swap and buy it in brand-new, it would be on the ground.
Same way we're doing right now. If, if this transition occurred, it would be really worse. Absolutely.
But I want you to know, you're not going to
She was on Zoom and she would also like to speak.
Go ahead, Amy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Amy, Amy.
Amy, you got this, or, or, Ian?
Yep. Go ahead. Go ahead, Amy.
Is it working?
Yep. Go ahead.
Try again. Is it working?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I apologize that I'm not there as well. I'm also stuck in quarantine. Um, I do want to say that I'm not originally from Lisbon. Never even knew Lisbon existed when I was in Cedar Rapids. Um, we moved out here seven years ago. I was not a part of the police department at that time, um, but it was closer to my previous department. When I left that department, for reasons everyone knows, um, I decided that it was time to make my home spot the place that I needed to be. And I am not, there's nothing against Lisbon, but I took one heck of a pay cut coming here. And I guarantee you that there's not a lot of officers without extreme measures that are willing to come here for what we're currently being paid. We are the lowest in Lynn County. We are the lowest in Cedar County. We, I do this because I love the job. My coworker does it because he loves the job as well. Previous Lisbon officers didn't always live in Lisbon either. Um, Jeff's living in Montsello, which is exactly where Vernon lived. So while there are some things that are the same, there are other things that we need and there are times that we have to come on Vernon and say, "Okay, we need help." And so to me, it makes a lot more sense to be able to have a joint, um, department in which we don't always have to feel bad about calling for help. Um, you know, I have to go over and ask Doug, "Hey, how do I, who do I talk to about this?" Or "How do I handle this?" Even if you did have a chief, there, there is a point that we're always calling them saying, "What direction do we go?" And I can honestly say, it hurts worse having to ask like that than it would be to be in a joint department and be like, "Hey, go over, what do you think of this?" Or "How can we work on this better?" So I completely understand those of you that have been around Lisbon your whole life and you don't want the identity to change. And I honestly don't think you would. I really believe that it's going to be a situation in which we're going to have better response time. We're going to eventually have better officers, or not better officers, but a better candidate pool because we're going to have more to offer. There's nothing really to offer here for somebody to say, "Ooh, I want to improve my life in kind of Lisbon." We can change that and get enough, get better candidates, a better pool of candidates to pull from. So it may not be popular, but I, I believe that this is the right direction. So it may not be popular, but I, I believe that this is the right direction, um, for our department to go. But that's all.
And you know, I'm thinking about that.
Amy, Amy.
Like, one thing to play off of what Amy said is, because I thought about it from every direction. Wouldn't we maybe get some candidates, because we're not Cedar Rapids, and maybe some, you know, everything like Ryan said, everything that's going on. Would maybe some people wanna come here because it is a small town, and they wouldn't have to deal with as much as they're dealing with in Cedar Rapids and the worry and everything? But Mount Vernon is hiring right now, and they're not getting it. So that shot that theory down.
Anybody anything else?
Does Nate want to say anything?
Yeah, I have.
Say it again.
I, I wanna just, maybe just a comment. Um, this is Sarah. I'm, I'm obviously there, um, and I'm still there. I just wanted to, to kind of, everybody had to weigh in their own pieces. I, I wanted to first, um, my daughter was in an auto accident in, on Main Street in Lisbon last November. The first person who responded at that call was Doug Shannon, and then the fire department, then the ambulance, and then our police officer. So if that doesn't tie you, that we already have, I mean, we have working, obviously, we have working components now. It truly only makes sense, and I'm gonna echo what Amy said. Who wants to move here that is, uh, obviously, first of all, a good officer and now somebody else's problem? Somebody that may have not even been gone through the academy yet? Or somebody is on the urgent or retiring and really is just lazy? I mean, we're gonna get probably four new candidates as far as police officers are just hiring. Nobody wants to have years' work. We have a, we, we have a great staff right now as our police force. But why not act to it and have a better police force? And I'll echo what Chris said, we work better together than we do now together. We've been doing it for how many years? This is all I know for Lisbon. Um, as far as being on the council, I mean, I know the mutual aid that Mount Vernon has. To me, for my family, 24-hour coverage makes more sense than anything else, because my family, just like everyone else's families to them, are everything to them. So if I can protect my family more so with 24-hour coverage, I'm not sure why you wouldn't if you didn't have a family. If you're not, if you don't have a family, then, then fine, but if you have a family, certainly, that's 24-hour coverage. And if you're a business owner, I'm personally a business owner. I feel very comfortable when I am looking at my cameras and I see, whether it's our police department or Mount Vernon's police department riding through three or four turns a day, through a very long ride, to make sure that nothing's going along that way. So that right there is a very good feeling. It can be 3 o'clock in the morning, and I get an alert from my cameras showing that a police officer is driving through a long ride. And a business owner that has a storefront, I think would agree with that. So that's all I have. I, I can echo everyone that has spoke. I've seen the pros, I've seen the cons. But at this point in time, I, I believe moving forward with this is, there are more pros to it than cons. It is not moving backward in time. It's actually maybe showing a little bit of unity through this ugly world that we live in right now. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Any bills, anything? You have a motion about a public hearing?
So...
Public hearing, turn 55. Nothing else on the agenda?
Call for a vote, you got a call for a vote?
Call for a vote to go out the close, for the...
Vote to, no, no session.
Public hearing.
No, motion about public hearing.
John motion, I second it.
A motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
That'll run. We'll probably go along on the next agenda.
We'll talk about it.
Goodbye, Sarah.